Well, at this time I will ask you to silence your phones.
Oh, yeah.
And we are having this meeting recorded. We don't have public here now, but if they were, they'd be invited to fill out a request to speak or if they desire to speak. So, since I see no public in attendance, I will go ahead and call the orders, special meeting workshop for the City of Grand Terrace for January 21st, 2021. If you would please stand with me and do a couple of things. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protim Hussey.
Here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Here.
Councilmember Robles is the excellent, and I'm ready to have form.
All right, thank you. So, at this time, I would open public comment, but I do not see any members of the public here wishing to speak, so I'll close public comment. We will move on to new business. So, tonight we are looking at discussion of and providing direction regarding city council number protocols and procedures, personal code of conduct, and legislative program policy, and this is the second workshop of this time. Mr. City Attorney, is this your, is this your topic at this time?
It is. So, do you recall, we met a few months back and went through our existing procedures and looked at how we could possibly beef it up. We considered various issues. Our subcommittee, Councilmember Robles, had identified some other areas that we may want to look into, and so we prepared a list. It's a preliminary list that we could talk about tonight. I'll go through them, and we'd love to get your input as to, A, do we want to incorporate some of this type of issue, and B, how to do so. So, the first one is a meeting end time. I remember we discussed this early on about maybe setting up a time to formally end the meeting. So, our meeting normally started at 6:00 p.m. In my very first city that I worked in, Monterey Park, I used to start in time, and they started at 7:00, and then at 10:00, and they established that by resolution. The concept was, you know, they didn't want to go late. They thought that, you know, decision-making gets a little shaky at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, because in that city, we would actually have meetings at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. So, the thought process was, at 10:00, they would have a vote to say, do we want to continue? Do we want to push it to another meeting, at least have that discussion? So, the question is, A, is this something this council would consider, and B, if so, what time would you like to end? I will tell you that every time we did hit the 10:00 p.m. mark, we never, I never had a council say, you know what, let's end here. They always continued. So, to me, it always, like, what's the point if you're always going to continue? But you at least have that option, and for the public, for the public, if they know there's an end time, it takes a little bit of the onus off the council, because that's the policy to consider.
All right. If you don't have that policy, but you hit, like, 11 o'clock, is there any reason why the council couldn't take it up at that point and say, you know, the hour's late? What is your, what is your opinion about continuing this item till our next scheduled meeting?
Yeah, you can always have that discussion.
So, you don't really have to have a policy for that one?
That's correct. The other concept that my then-city manager said is, well, it also helps city manager kind of establish how much should be placed on the agenda, so at least have a good time for it.
Except that we could just say to the city manager, we don't want to run very late.
Correct.
Councilmember Robles?
No, I was going to say, not that much.
Yeah, but sometimes when you just have that much on the agenda, it's a three-hour discussion.
Yeah.
You know, Mayor, a couple cities that I worked for, we had that scenario, and the city attorney suggested, that said that normally what would happen is there would be a motion to extend the meeting beyond, you know, it's 10 o'clock, motion, right? So, you had that time, and if you were going to run into a really long time where you felt, you know, it's been four hours, and I'm not sure, I want to make a decision now, it gives you the option to be able to say, this item is not going to move forward to the next agenda, so you're not sort of pressured to keep going on.
Correct.
So, and what happened, I think, we started at 5:00, and we had a 10:30 deadline, and at 10:30, they would always make the motion, someone would approve it to continue on. So, in our particular case, it's my experience, right on the three-hour mark, this council gets a little upset about looking at the agenda, can't believe this. And so, you know, if you did something like, for example, if you started at 12:00.
I just put it back on you, and you shouldn't realize.
Right, right, right. I've seen that.
You have like about a three-hour limit, and that's how you plan your agenda?
Snigger's bar commercial thing, man.
And there's, and there are times where you only have a few agenda items, but they take a long time, and so I think we're, hopefully, we're managing that. But that gives you the option to say, when you get to that 12:00 mark, to say, my recommendation to extend the meeting, if there's no tolerance for it, then it doesn't, it doesn't get approved.
I think if I read your, you write with your comment, is, is that at least it gives you a backstop?
Yes.
And it's a backstop that the council really can't blame, be blamed for in the long run, because it was decided upfront. In other words, the people would come in, and if they look at that, you know, when it dropped in at 10:00, then, you know, as it, as it comes up, they shouldn't be surprised.
Except.
So, it's a win-win that way.
Except that if you're in the middle of an item and you decide to stop at 10:00, they're going to be upset if it was an item.
You always have the election to be able to change.
Yeah. No, I know, I'm just saying, it's anyway.
Of course, I wouldn't vote for it.
You wouldn't vote for it?
Vote for 10.
No, it says 10, and we agree with 10.
Yeah. We have to go.
Got it.
Later on in here, isn't there also a, a, an item that is the motion to extend?
Yeah.
So, both of those are addressed in here, but do we really need both of them? We only would need one, and we don't even need one now, right? That's what appears to me.
I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that I believe it's necessary, although I'm not against it. I guess that's where I put it. I, I tend to be more on the side of, why would you institute something that there really isn't a huge need for? And so, if at any time, if you went to 10:00, and, and it was just, it was just a late night for that point, you still had a lot on your agenda, it seems to me that that might be a time to just open it up and say, hey, you know, we just finished this item, it's 10 o'clock, we still have five more items to go, you know, I motion that we continue to the next meeting. And, and I think that, I don't know what, I don't, I don't, like I said, I'm not against it, I just don't really see a huge need for it.
So.
Was it on, was this, could you address this, because one of us thought it needed to be?
Councilmember Robles.
Okay.
Backfunded the dossier.
So, in reality, if you, if you set a time.
I think it was you. You said 8:30, we should be done.
Yeah.
I thought you said 6:30.
Yeah, so if you set, for example.
Sorry, we're done at 30 minutes.
If you set the time at 10:00, it's very rare that you will ever hit 10:00. If you set it at, at 9:00, you might have more frequency of doing that, but if you set it at 10:00, then you would, you'd be pushing that, you wouldn't have that every time. I think you're more likely at 9:00, 9:30 at the latest. So, if you put it at 10:00, you may never use this, it'll always be there for you in case, in case you need it.
One other thing that I say, too, is that we are a, you know, we're a layman body, and so if for one reason or another, somebody has an appointment in the morning, you know, and it goes until 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, whatever, that kind of thing, we're not getting paid the kind of money LA City Council pays, or anybody else for that matter.
I pretty much always have a meeting the next morning. Always. No matter what time.
I'm just thinking of you.
Huh?
I'm just thinking of you.
I know, and I appreciate that.
It doesn't matter to me.
I say 8:30 is the time to set it for.
So, I'd be in favor for, for the, because you can't lose.
So, what are you, are you suggesting 10:00?
10:00, yeah.
What do you, what do y'all think, 10?
Yeah, I'd split that. Kind of the way current items considered after 10:30, and I think, so that section C, that we're involved.
So, Mr. City Attorney, so, so right now, in our current policy, we have listed the council meetings are every Tuesday, every second and fourth Tuesday of every month, beginning at 6:00 p.m., and will be ending at, at 10:00.
Correct. Well, I wouldn't say it like that. I would say that at 10:00 p.m.
Yeah.
We, all kind of mirrored with the policy, that 10:00 p.m., the council will consider whether to attend.
Okay, yeah. So, the public will have that notice.
Correct.
This says 11:00 p.m. Are we going to keep that in here, 11:00 p.m.?
No, no, I think the direction was 10:00 p.m.
Okay, okay, okay. These are just samples that she pulled out, so you can, okay, the talking points you can elaborate on.
Correct.
Okay.
The other point.
So, where would that go? Because the one that's in front of me, I'm not seeing page nine has anything to do with that.
So, it's actually on packet page 45 in the, is, yeah, packet page 45.
I made some hard copies.
Are you just going to back everything up one hour then in that paragraph?
Yeah, so.
Where it says, where city council makes every other end of meetings before 11:00, are you going to change that to 10:00?
Yeah, I'm going to use that language, but I'm going to insert it into our current policy.
Okay.
So, so this that you've done that says council procedures or protocol handbook?
Yes.
This is not what we have right now.
That is correct.
This is, this is a sample.
That is correct.
And so, everything you're referring to in here is a sample. What we have here that has the three different dates on it is actually our current policy.
And the one that you have on the table is the highlights from the last thing you've used.
So, this is the one in the packet, and it's very misleading, because it makes it look like this is our current document.
Yeah.
Very misleading, and I, and I'm going to emphasize that three more times, because it's wrong when we put things in our packet that are misleading to the council and to the public. This should have all kinds of things on it saying, this is a sample.
Okay.
Let me get one head.
I.
See, 10:00.
I read your city bill.
See, see? I don't need to go to 10:00 to get, to get disgruntled.
You found the city bill references?
Yeah, I saw it.
It was the one.
So, then the next issue is, I don't consider after the cutoff point, do we want to take up matters after that? I, to me, I don't think that's necessary. I think the council can make that determination at that point in time of their extended, but...
Right, so you just need to, to have under the option of it closing at 10:00, the provision that, that it can be extended with the, with a majority council vote.
Correct, because there, one concept is, if you're on a long item, you'll finish that item, but not consider or open up any new items.
Yeah.
The other option is, you vote to say, okay, we're going to extend the current item, and we're going to start the new items after 10:00 p.m.
Well, yeah, and it very well might be that the next item is something that really needs to get decided, but I would hope that would be earlier in the agenda. So, I think that really comes down to managing the agenda to put the items that, I don't know, that, that needs to be considered on which items come first, which items will save till later.
Correct.
Further, is it a vote of the majority, or is it unanimous on continuing?
I would say it's a vote of the majority.
Okay, and so the ones that, that vote not to, then they can get up and leave if they so choose, is that?
I assume that happens.
Okay.
I assume that happens. Not based on the time, but just because they, they just didn't want to.
Okay, Mayor Protim, you got it. I'm out of here. Anyway, okay, so.
The majority won't leave, right?
Right, yeah.
So, that's, that's how, that's how you'll write that section up, then?
Yes.
And then, and then you won't have the items to consider after as a, as a separate section?
Correct. Correct, I think we'll just specify the time, and then the council can make that determination on its own.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, might I point out on page one at the top, we should fix the title?
Which, which document?
I'm looking at the real document, I have this one, the real, the three things.
Page one?
Where it says code section, and spelled sec toine.
Yeah.
So, since we're talking about.
I, I agree, we should fix that.
A page?
Page one.
Page one?
Well, that was my fault, that was me just doing that today.
That was, that was just the highlight where the change was?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be corrected.
She'll remove it.
Yeah, that, that was just, this is an addition that's going to be made in, but it's not bad. You have to get government code section. That's regulating city council.
I'll keep you serious.
Sorry about that. It's great.
So.
Okay, six more.
I'm going to address one issue that's also related to time, and I'm, the city manager wants to tie me on it, is some cities do their closed sessions before the regular meeting, so that, you know, it's not tagged up for the regular meeting. I don't know if the council would be open to that, where if you lock them up, for example, we start at 5:00 for a closed session before a 6:00 meeting, just an idea.
Normally, that's a hard time for me to show up. If we started, if we, if we just went into our closed session of the first item of business at 6:00, that might be an alternative, because that could be, that could be stated on the agenda, too.
Of course.
That the meeting starts at 6:00, but there's a closed session, and so the.
Open session.
So, the open session will begin after, Councilmember Allen?
So, one of the things that we recently made a change to in our agenda was, we, we moved our own public comments to the end, and I, the way I understood that, that was an attempt to make it as convenient as possible to the public and those who wanted to speak. And by doing our closed session ahead of time, I, I've gone to the county board soup meetings, but that closed session that's supposed to be an hour goes before, and everybody just kind of sits around until noon.
And that happens in SPCA also, because they do their closed session prior.
I'm not sure if I'm on the square of order with that yet.
I, I'm thinking unless there's a really, really pressing reason to do it prior, I mean, it's, it's better for the council, but it's not better for the public, I agree.
All right, just an idea.
Yeah, discussion. I suppose if I lived in Irvine or Anaheim, I'd suggest that, too. I'm just, I'm just joking around.
Well, no, he has to stay for the whole time, anyway.
Okay. Next one is request to refer items to any council standing committee, board, commissioner, council-appointed. I'm not exactly sure what, what the thought process behind this provision is.
Well, the two, if you look at the, if you, the document talks about a standing committee and ad hoc committee. So, the ad hoc committee is one where it is just that particular subject matter, and the standing committee is one where it is a standing committee to take on regular items.
Correct. I, well, it's a combination of both. So, you have a, a standing committee is like a planning commission, if that's what you mean.
Right, because you have boards, commissions, council-appointed, yeah.
And so, they do have a certain subject matter, but they're, they're a continuing body, whereas an ad hoc committee is usually just for a short-term single purpose, like we want to look into like building this building, we want community improvement. So, it's a short-termer, and so I think what the thought process is, do we want to be able to request it? A, do we want standing committees, which is one of the other points that we later get to? Do we want to establish standing committees and subcommittees? I know that was something that Councilmember Robles had referred in the past in my discussions with her, in us. For example, in my other cities, we have like a legal subcommittee, we have, you know, a finance subcommittee, and it's made up of council members, two council members that the city manager can work with more closely on an issue, and then they bring it back. So, much like this project, where she was a subcommittee on this specific issue, there's more formal topics like finance, legal, whatever you name it.
Well, and I think that's the difference in the document, where it talks about standing committees, and then there's ad hoc committees. And so, for example, when there's the orange show that you're putting up, you pointed ad hoc committee.
That's correct.
That's, that's dealing with that issue, and that's it. And it, so it, it's not something, so for example, for a, a standing committee versus an ad hoc committee, so a standing committee would be something where you, I even said, so you're doing the budget, and you have a standing committee, and it goes to that standing, goes to that standing committee, and that standing committee provides an opportunity to hold additional meetings, give more comments, and then it comes back, comes back to the council. So, and the difference is, also, too, I believe, the full council, the mayor or the council can appoint an ad hoc committee, only the council can, can appoint a standing committee.
They can appoint both.
Okay, so in the document, it, it does say something different, so.
So, is there, I, I don't know that I see much of a value in our case to having a standing committee or appointing ad hoc committees when, when something presents itself. Councilmember Allen?
Are our, are the committees that we already have, like the historical and cultural and the arts, are those standing committees?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, and we have said, you know, let's have this go to whatever committee.
So, the standing committees are not council committees, they're all existing committees?
Yeah, they're, I mean, you could create others, but yes, it's like the planning commission, the parks, because standing, that they have a long-term jurisdiction over subject matter, it's not only type of thing.
So, we're not just talking about the council appointing standing committees for them? We're talking about?
Yeah, that's a subcommittee.
Okay.
This is, this is actually just referring items to them.
Yes, exactly.
And so, we already have a mechanism for referring?
You can always do that.
Huh?
You could, the council can always do, like, for example, if we want to say, you know what, what do we want to do in this area from a land use standpoint, why don't we refer to the planning commission?
And we already do that.
And you can already do that.
And so, we don't need an extra?
I don't, I don't think you need this section.
Okay.
But again, it was listed, so.
Okay. Is anybody okay, is everybody okay with the way that we do it already? Okay.
I'm going to skip to the standing and ad hoc committees. So, I think what she's asking for is, do we want to have a section on creating standing committees and ad hoc committees? And the other part of it is the ad hoc subcommittee and the standing subcommittee, and that's really members of the city council. Does the city council want to have two members that each year are going to be focused on this one issue, like, for example, dealing with the orange show, or dealing with this other issue, like a drug task force, and they're basically the, the two people that are dealing with that issue? Again, the council can always do that. The question, do we want a policy to address it?
Do we not have a policy, please?
Well, how do we, how do we appoint ad hoc committees right now? On what basis are we able to do that?
So, you, you could, you could do it on anything, so say, for example.
No, I'm, I'm not asking what, or what subjects, I'm saying, what right now allows us to do that?
There's, I don't say there's anything that allows you, there's a policy, but.
But there's nothing that keeps us from doing it.
Correct.
And we already do it.
It's possible.
Okay, do we need a policy that says we can do that?
I don't believe there's that.
Is there a reason why we need your policy leaving out?
That's what I'm saying, if we already have the ability to do it.
You already have the ability, it's a matter of do we want to reference something in our policy to address it? I'm not sure if we need to, because you already have that before.
Well, and I think the idea of, like, the last meeting, we had an item that came before us and said, do we want to bring back a discussion about appointing an ad hoc committee?
Correct.
And so, I, I think we kind of already have a mechanism for doing it.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm fine without it.
The only area that I think she probably would like something is to establish official committees on certain subject matters that will translate, you know, throughout the year, so like a legal subcommittee, a finance subcommittee, you know, basically like a two-member board that will continue to address issues, and that the city manager can refer or get, you know, some input from on certain types of issues. It's hard to explain, but.
Instead of the council as a whole?
Correct.
With an item that comes on the agenda?
Correct. So, for example, like, in my other city.
But, but give me an example of here where that would be something that we would need.
In my opinion, I don't think you need it.
Okay.
Again, these are all the topics that were raised by our subcommittee member, and so.
Okay.
We're presented for discussion.
All right. What do y'all believe about that, sub-standing subcommittees? Councilmember, or Mayor Protim?
Yeah, it turns to me and I, number three, Mayor, that Mayor of the city council made point two, listen up, and how much thicker do you have to go?
Great. Mayor Protim?
Yeah, just like, you know, I requested the committee on the last one, and I think, you know, like, I want to request another committee, like, you know, the homeless problem that we're having.
Correct.
To deal with, you know, bring it to the council, hey, can we bring, you know, make a committee for that, so that way we can work with the city manager, and then bring it back to the council, because they have, the county has, you know, special groups and stuff. I think we're doing it the right way, is what we're doing, so.
Okay. And you're saying, you think that it's fine the way that it's written?
Yeah, I think so, because it seems to me that if we can't get enough interest to, to have more than, you know, you two members of the council on, maybe we don't really need to address the issue as hard as we think we do. And maybe something that the council could reexamine and say, why are we doing this? You know, which in this case could be interesting.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
I don't, I think it's, the way we're doing it right now seems, I think it needs to be more complicated.
Okay. So, that standing and, and ad hoc, because I, because I see that there's two bullet items addressing each, it, it sounds to me like we're doing pretty well the way that we have it set up, and we have a process for requesting it to come to council for a discussion, and, and so that seems to work pretty well. All right?
Good morning. The next area, I'll go back up. Secondary motions defined and debate and voting. Again, we are governed by Rosenberg.
Yeah.
Those issues are laid out in Rosenberg. It's, I don't know if it's necessary to put them in our policies, since it's not going to be there. What the other cities did is they incorporated all that and mixed it into their policies, which is fine. The question is, do we want to do this then?
If, if you, I would rather if you needed to make a reference to it, that you have it as a heading, and then reference word in Rosenberg.
Right, and I believe we already do reference Rosenberg, and we have our sample general policy attached to it. So, I don't know if we need to go any further in our policies, or again, it's for discussion.
I'm good with leaving it. Any other opinions? Nope? Nope, okay.
Okay.
You're good?
Let's see. Council protocol, so council conduct, enforcement censure, is, she references 34, 35, 36, about how do we treat staff as professionals, and.
Have you already have that in our?
We, we do.
It's not expanded the way that works, but we do have that.
Okay.
We have it in ours. Let's see.
At top page eight of ours, decorum and order with respect to employees, seven and eight, decorum and order with respect to the public. So, the city manager said, you know, theirs is broken out a little more in detail, however our policies are already covered.
And they made some modifications to it, I think.
Correct.
At the last review, make, you know, make some changes, striking a mayor to chair, um, and it turns out we're going to be providing revision to, on number three, on page eight.
Okay. Is there anything missing from this section of our document that my colleagues can request that we add?
No.
Councilmember Allen?
Um, I don't see a check here.
Okay. Mayor Proton, listen.
I don't see. So we're just talking about decorum?
Correct.
Yeah, I, well, in our, in our document, it starts, I think, seven?
No, three, man.
Okay. And I know that you're all well versed on this from our document.
It's, it's the section thirty-four, thirty-five. And that's, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think I have one question.
Councilmember what?
Somewhere in here, in this particular portion, it talks about sergeant-at-arms states over. There it is, three, on page, our, our page ten of subsection three at the top of page.
Okay.
And say, can we direct the sergeant-at-arms to remove the per, who is that sergeant-at-arms? Because I would see a definition of who the sergeant.
Lieutenant Ling.
Yeah. Also, in other words, it's open to interpretation.
I'm thinking if there was somebody that needed to be removed, I'd be looking to our, our sheriff lieutenant.
Um, but the lieutenant's not here.
Then Mr. Duffy or on your own, maybe, maybe, uh, Mr. Gura will help you.
Well, you know, and, and, and there is a process, how that, in the past, when I've had the, in cities where the person needed to be removed, there was a process that we had in place. Then, then the chairperson of the meeting would, would tell the person, you're being disruptive, give them a warning.
Yeah.
Then they would, uh, tend the meeting to recess, and then the sergeant-at-arms would then ask the person to, you know, to leave. So, I, I'm sure we have it laid out in this, in that, no, it would be?
It would be, pretty good.
Right, no, but your, your point is, is, uh, something I think, seriously, I think if we don't have an appointed sergeant-at-arms, we need to indicate who that person is.
So you have lieutenant-at-arms.
That's right. The armed, the armed members in our chambers.
The arm breaker. Arm breaker, leg breaker.
Okay, so, so that's, that's good, that's a good, um, comment to point out. Anything else that is missing in our decorum?
There is one.
That we should add?
The only question in that particular one?
Uh huh.
You know, we've had experience with both kinds of things.
Yeah.
Is, it seems to me that, uh, there's something in Roberts that talks about, um.
Can we mark?
Or maybe one of these how-to guides. It says, it's best to go ahead and close the meeting.
Right.
In other words, you know, so that way everybody understands business is closed off, and then you close the meeting, turn around, and then allow that pursuit to take place, whatever intercourse takes place with that, and then, bang, 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 reel for the meeting. And it gives you a nice steambreaker.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think Mr. Duffy was talking about calling for recess at that point.
There you go.
Yeah. And, and I agree, that is a good way to comment everything down. And then somebody can have a discussion with the person that's being disruptive and let them know, if, if you'd like to stay, we need you to do these things. We're not, we're not trying to get you to leave, we're just trying to get you to behave in an appropriate manner.
The only point is disruption is what they try to concentrate on here.
Yeah.
Is it's not an issue of whether I like you or I don't like you, for your fat mouth and that stuff. Bottom line is, is that it's a disruption that we can't tolerate in a business at hand.
Well, the, the thing with the disruption, and, and, and Councilmember Allen, I'll give you the floor in a second, the thing with disruption is it's not, it's not even so much the person and their disruption, that, that what they're doing themselves as an individual, what they're further doing is, is they are making others in the room that might want to stand up and speak intimidated, because they don't know if they're going to be attacked by this person. So it's one thing for them, I mean, it's, it's disruptive if they're upset with the council, but if I'm a member of the public and I want to speak, I'm not sure I want to risk now being, being the, the subject of this, this outburst.
Yeah, I agree.
Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. On page thirty-eight, it's back to page seventy-four. So, but it's in this, in this one right here that we've got here, it's on thirty-eight. It's the, under G, board and commission members, major conduct and guidelines for corrective action removal. And it, it talks about, um, sanctions, you know, and I don't know if it, um, somewhere also I was reading about censures, I think we'll get into that next.
It's in.
So, do we have all, you know, a policy on sanction and reprimand and all that stuff? Like it mentions here in G?
We do that.
Do we need one?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry?
Absolutely.
Well, we don't have censure either, but I'm wondering what, what power we have to do any of that?
Right now, of all, without a policy, it's hardly a censure, you usually do the due process to, to go through.
So right now, the policy that you have, when you have a board member that you're not satisfied with, is to remove them for cause or not cause?
Right.
And that's it?
So leave.
You, you don't have a, a process, and then you, so let's think about this. If you establish a rule that says you will censure, then you have to have a process in order to censure. And the way this is laid out, it's, it's pretty complicated, I think.
Well, it says right here, the very first line, counseling verbal reprimands and written warnings may be administered by the mayor, board, commission members failing to comply with city policy back. Those three things, do we have a policy, do we have a policy that the mayor can do that? Written warnings?
But.
Or verbal reprimands or counsel?
Whether you have a policy or not, I don't know that mayor can do that. And that's the, that's the question that I would have, is that, I don't.
Well, probably with that, without the council saying, let's do this. Councilmember Wilson?
I think what we're trying to, because this is elected official, correct?
Sure. Well, it can be a board commission member or board.
The thought pattern would be to, it's not, of course, it's not under a penalizing situation, that's not the point. The point is to be able to keep the meeting going, you know, a logic process. So I think, what you're talking about means that you basically, what, if you have a policy to be able to remove a member, you have to back up from that. In other words, you have to set up all the procedures that go from a removal all the way up to, you know, shut up.
Well, I think there's two discussions going on here. I think we have the discussion about a council member, but we're also, on page thirty-eight, I think we're talking more about planning commissioners.
Well, I think we're actually talking about the authority of the mayor to do these
three things to any member of a board, commission, or committee, and that is either counsel, verbally reprimand, or issue a written warning, in order to build a case, you know, to justify future more serious unnecessary actions. So, that's what I see this as, not, well, that we're addressing a planning commission individual or council member in particular, but that we have a policy in place to show the procedure steps taken, so that.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the, and the question that I was asking, sir, is, does the mayor have the ability to do that? You just have a policy, you want to, but if the mayor's not the ability to do it, within the mayor's authority, does she have the ability to do that?
Does the mayor have the ability to, to remove a council member?
Doesn't it only take a policy?
No. No, it does not.
So it becomes, then it becomes an issue of just administrating?
So if you, if you do a council censure?
Yeah.
Then what you would do is, it would be a part of the record, that, and that's it.
And, and what does that get you?
That would, that's what I'm saying, that's the extent of it.
I, I know that in certain circumstances, the council could then also vote to remove that council member from whatever boards and commissions they're appointed to also.
Sure.
Depending on what the issue is. I, I know that that's done.
True.
But, but beyond that, there's really not a lot that the council can do to reprimand another member of the council.
Right. And so, and, I'm sorry, please, sir.
Does that mean then, that if a person can't serve for, say, some inability or whatever mental capacity issue, that they are the only ones that can take themselves out of the cell?
Or they, yeah, they could either resign or they could be recalled.
Well, no, so for example, if someone, if someone misses a meeting, your rules already said, at a certain period of time, they miss consecutive meetings, not council members, but.
No, I, I think you, I think you're asking a council, right?
Yeah, there's like two meetings or three meetings or something like that.
That's for planning.
Don't they have some kind of?
There's also a county basis.
I, I don't know, if you're an elected official, I think the only way that you get, you can, I think you either resign or you're recalled.
Right.
Oh, Mayor Proton?
That's a protract.
And, and that's the thing like Councilmember Allen was saying, you know, because I've been on boards where if you do miss so many meetings, you're, you're not doing the board any favor, because then you'll have a corps or anything else. So you've got to leave, you know, and there's other people there going to take the place, you're just holding it for a title thing, you know.
Right, you're not adding to the conversation.
And you're hurting the cause that it's for, and you're putting undue burden under it by because people are getting everything ready. So I think, you know, we still, we need to have a, hey, two meeting droughts, something, but, you know, um.
But, but I, okay, so I, I still think we're talking about two different issues.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I'm going on this, you know, what he's talking about, if we do have disruption, you know, and somebody's being, and then we have it. Well, I'm here as a public, well, you're not public, because every time when, like, we speak, we'll say, well, I'm just here as a, a private person, we're still a councilman, we're still a mayor, and then, we can't go out in public and say, I'm here as a public person, because they don't look at that. But if you have people that are disrupted and then are trying to do stuff, we need to put procedures in there, like, hey, you're not doing good, you know, not just, we're just going to get rid of you, like, we have to build up why this is happening and stuff, or we have to have a case, not to make that person look like, oh, they're just kicking me off because they don't like me, no, we're kicking you off because you're disrupting, you're not doing this, you're, you're, you're doing, you know, procedures that they're not doing. As, um, Councilmember Wilson said, we have to have policies and procedures to make that happen, so that this.
For planning commission, and, and I think we're having planning commission discussion and we're having council discussion, and, and that, and that's what I'm saying, I, I think we need to have both of those discussions, but I think they're separate.
Okay, and commission, so you have your parks commission and all the other appointees.
I thought those commissions are the standing commissions, or committees, or at will?
Yeah, they are committees.
Well, well, yeah, they're at will, but, but you can't remove a planning commissioner, apparently.
Okay.
Not, not without a majority vote.
They serve at the behest of the council.
That's not what they told us.
Well, I don't know where they got their information, but it's at will, I mean, the attorney can probably tell me what.
So, why don't we, Mayor, if you're okay, why don't we address the commissions first?
Let's, let's, yeah, let's do that.
So for commissioner, um, that is correct, they, they serve at the, at the will of the council, and so they can be removed at any time if they're without us. So, what, what, on page thirty-eight, what this is suggesting, do we want to have a policy? I agree, I don't think it is the mayor, I think it's the full council, uh, you know, censuring or, or reprimanding a commissioner for actions that he or she does, whether it's not showing up to meetings, whether it's being unprepared, whether it's, uh, you know, we adopted a policy and not getting training.
I, I'm wondering if this is written as it is to have the mayor do it because it's not done in public.
That's what I'm saying.
And so maybe it is that we don't just have the mayor, but maybe we have the mayor and the mayor proton are a, a committee that meets with.
With a source.
Somebody that needs a verbal counseling.
It's a source.
Because then you don't have an, it doesn't look like an individual.
Right.
Is, is having a problem with the person, it's, it's a representative of the council.
Right.
That is, is bringing that message to say, look, these are the standards, and this is where you're not meeting the standards.
So, let me just venture here, Adrian, and to say, so, the city council is a policy body.
Right.
So, I would caution you guys by stepping into the arena of.
Well, the city attorney would be part of that meeting as well.
Okay.
Because if we're supposed to appoint and we can remove, and we're the only ones that can appoint and remove, then we're the ones that have to say, you're not meeting our standards, and if you don't come back in compliance, then we are going to remove you. But, but to your point, yes, a, a city attorney should be there as part of that discussion.
Well, the other process i- in that scenario is, when you do an appointment to a committee, the appointment says you have to attend the meeting and so on and so on and so on. When they don't comply with that, they're going to be off the committee. And I don't.
But it doesn't happen magically.
Who's keeping track of that, though?
There's all, the, every meeting that you, that you have.
So it's just, it's just meetings? That's the only, that's the only bar that they have to meet?
I, I think, well, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, here's my, here's my concern. And the, the attorney's okay with it, that's fine. I don't know that the elected officials have the ability or the authority to, um, reprimand other citizens. I, I think you have policies you put in place, they don't comply with those policies, then it, it's taken care of that way. I, I think the, I don't know, Adrian, you, I, you have to examine that. And I, I think, my question.
How about this, how about this? This sounds like a whole section, maybe we need a subcommittee to go and look at, I'm serious, um, to, to really come up with what a process works for planning commission, for park and rec and all those, what actually works in this city? Because this is pretty extensive, it's probably come from a city that the mayor is like Merrick R. City, who, you know, has a different, has a different, uh, set of rules. And so, um, you know, in, in our city, to your point also, you know, the mayor is, is a member of council, doesn't get an extra vote and all that, um, doesn't run the city. So, my suggestion is that I think all of you are saying it's very important that we have the, the process that needs to be followed, that we need to be communicating to those that we appoint what's expected, and then a feedback mechanism if they aren't meeting what's expected. And I think that that needs to be something that's specific to our city. So my suggestion is that we have an ad hoc that goes and investigates what is important in those procedures, and that comes back to us as part of this document. Thoughts?
I agree.
I agree also. And, and I'm thinking of, you were talking about, you know, meeting attendance, which is probably one of the smaller things. But there are also things that would need to be judged from a standpoint of, we, the, the people that appoint should be the people that are moved, that's criteria. And when you back into that circumstance, you have to have justification for removal. Well, there's a whole laundry list of them.
Absolutely.
You know, felony, you know, those are the kinds of things that you have to be able to paperwork yourself right for that. But the, the overwhelming desire is, is that we want the community to be served properly. And that's what we have the basis for. We're, we're, we're charged with responsibility to make sure that the community is served. So who else could really do it, it's the edge you can't do it, and they don't work for you.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think that you put staff in the middle of that, as you're saying either, I think that that's, that's a, that's hard on the staff to be in that position to have to do that as well.
And the body itself can't do it, so.
Well, and I think doing.
Chairman couldn't do it.
But in public, to, to read off a list of the things that somebody is not doing to remove them is, is not a very nice thing to do to anybody, Councilmember Allen.
The more I think about Mr. Duffy's last comments that he made, I can understand the value in that if someone challenges your authority to give them a verbal warning or written warning or counseling as is laid out in this thing, I can, you know, who are you to say that to me? But if it's like he said, okay, it's all written out right here, you know, then, there's no, you don't have to defend yourself, because you don't, there wouldn't be any, or we, the council, wouldn't have to defend our actions to them, because it's right here.
Well, plus, if they have accepted it as a condition of being admitted, out front's a single deal, you can't slap a hand unless you give them the instructions to begin with.
Because.
They're no way to go in.
Yeah. There, you know, certain individuals could look at it and say, are you just doing this because you don't like me politically?
Right, right, you know, because I'm going to run against you or I'm going to.
They're going to do that with staff as well.
Yeah, but staff's never, staff's never run against them politically.
It doesn't matter, if they, they can then challenge staff and they can, they can make a hostile work environment for staff.
Now, if you're, if you're suggesting that they might bring in legal representation or something like that, that could, that could make it worse, you know, somebody gets their feelings hurt, they've got plenty of money, and they decide they're going to do something like, that's always an alternative, no matter what decision we made.
Yeah.
No matter what decision we made, you know, it can take, be taken to the courts. Stupid, most people wouldn't do it without a deposit.
That's true.
And, and so, if the process works where, say, for example, the council shall, shall appoint members of the boards and commissions and lay out the, the guidelines for, for being on the, on the committee. And then, and then when you have those committees and you lay that out, the attendance and so on and so on. For example, when I was a city clerk, and I was city administrator personnel and city clerk in Oroville, when I did the swear in, I swore in based upon state law, federal constitution and so on, and also the municipal code. And so, under that scenario, if you violated any of those things, you, you violated your ability to be on, on that committee. And you went, so.
And so, to me, that's part of what, if we form an ad hoc, they would go and investigate all the things to lay out in that way. Because I think that, I think that there's a lot that needs to be put in there, but I don't think that this fits our city. What's written here is an example, I think it was written for a city that's structured differently than ours.
I know some cities where if they do see an issue, they'll just have, like, the city managerial references to the mayor, and they will just have a signed discussion, weigh that in. Um, it's not a policy, just some of that.
Well, and I think in other cities, though, too, there are, I, I believe San Bernardino is one that does this. Each of their districts appoints planning commissioners. You know, and so it's straight out, they get to appoint whoever they want, and so, um, in that district, if there's an issue with planning commissioner, then it's, then it's expected the council member will go talk to them, but they may or may not do it.
Sure.
And so, again, that, that's not really a fit for our city either. And I don't, I don't think that us directly appointing a planning commissioner makes the difference there either. Um, because if, if there's a, an opinion that, um, I don't like the way that Doug's planning commissioner is acting, and I ask him to have a conversation with him, Doug can always just tell me, yeah, I don't, I don't agree. Or, or, yeah, I'll have a discussion with you, you know, she doesn't like the way you're behaving.
And San Bernardino is a classic example of that, because it's a good old boy shop, and it always has been. You know, because they set up with districts, they appoint their buddies, and they're saying, you know, it's kind of a domino effect with, because it, it's always been known that there's lots of friends and buddies in the San Bernardino system. And so, we don't want to get into that circumstance at all.
No, so I, I think that it's important that we have something that fits for what's expected of our planning commissioners. But I think that that's a, it's a good discussion for an ad hoc committee to, to explore what makes sense and then come back to the council.
I think for all of our commissions, even the park and rec.
Yeah, I'm sorry, planning commission, park and rec, historical and cultural, any, and, and any that are appointed, any that we might create later on would fall under that same, that same.
We don't need to draw ourself work, because consulting is gonna do something for the betterment of the city.
That's right. All right, so that would come forward to us at the city council meeting to, to perhaps appoint an ad hoc committee for that, or can we do that?
I think we do that now as part of the discussion.
Okay, so who would like to be part of that? Okay, so, Councilmember Wilson and Mayor Pro Tem Hasi will take that action, thank you very much.
We have a time, right?
Well, the sooner the better, how about a month?
Soon as possible.
How about by the second meeting in February? Hmm?
Sure.
Is that all right? Are you gonna go work on that now?
No, no.
Hold up, I gotta get my stuff.
You're putting your stuff away to go. You have it ready to go, or do you want to do the first meeting in February?
You can, yeah.
So, okay, so you, so the two of you can get together and come back by the first meeting in February?
Well, we can get together, yeah.
Well, Zoom, you can get together.
And so, so Mayor, what we'll do is, we, we will gather up our existing policies of the different committees, and then we'll, we'll, hope Deborah will work with, we'll, we'll meet up with these guys, and we'll kind of go over, get what they want, and we'll, we'll work, we'll go from there.
All right. That's the first meeting?
Second meeting.
That's probably second meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna meet with them before that, but yeah, they're, they're gonna go back to the meeting in February, which means they wouldn't be done mid-February.
Yeah. Councilmember Allen? No, okay, so then we were gonna talk about the council.
Yes, so on page forty-two of the other policy, it lays out enforcement mechanisms and censure policy, which we currently do not have, which is something the council would like to consider. And usually, and we're speaking early, it's more a slap on the hand, more than anything. It's, it's a, a public statement that the rest of the council disagrees on, you know, and action taken.
And it's also a process where the action, if action happens right then and there, you have to wait to then, minus, you have to wait to notify the person, and then they have to re-agendize it on the agenda and for that, for that whole process to happen. And then when it happens, it's a, it's a, I guess the issue is, it's a matter of record. It's a, it's a censure, the council censured this person, and that's the extent of what you're, what you can do.
So.
Councilmember Allen.
So, I just wanna make sure, I just, so if, when you say like, if an incident occurred during a meeting that a council member felt was worthy of censure, it would, the censure would not occur right then?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, it would just, okay, it would.
It would be agendized for a future meeting. The whole thought process is that there has to be due process before the action is taken. And so, you have an opportunity for that person to say why he or she took, they had that action or made that statement, or did it ever be an action that's subject to censure, and then there's a discussion of it.
Only applicable to the city of Bell, anyway.
That's why I said one bell, yeah.
What would you like to do with this? Would you like to do the same thing we're doing with the, the last item for the, for the commissions and boards? Have an ad hoc book it, possibility for censure?
Well, if that's what it takes, I think we'd, to give a policy on it, because I can recall in the past where, uh, Councilmember Wilson wanted to employ a censure, but we don't have a policy on it, so he's unable to. And I, you know, I think, so I think we need a policy on it, you know, and if it takes an ad hoc committee to get one, then, then, or having it added to the ad hoc committee we've got going here for enforcement, you know, because.
So, maybe this is a question for the city attorney, so the, the process they are here kind of kick to the steps. Is it something that the council is considering having something more than the, than the steps, or, or giving reasons why you want to censure, or is it just a matter of having a process in place? Because if that's the case, you can modify this existing, the, the steps here to get you what you want. Unless you're trying to elaborate, I mean, I, I think things come up, I don't know if you can come up with every single reason why you want to censure someone, but you want to have a process in, in place.
Right, and I'm thinking you take this and, and, and mark it up so that it fits our city.
Yeah, I think the city attorney can do that.
I agree.
Okay, so is that something you'd like the city attorney to do?
Yes.
Okay.
And isn't this in kind of the whole paper trail situation we've talked about? I mean, we don't, one of the things that that's gonna take is a hall, but, and there are circumstances where it might be a court.
Um, question. On, um, page forty-four, which is back to page eighty, sub item four dot three, personal code of conduct for members of the city council. Do we have, have we?
Yes.
A personal code of conduct, which shall be adopted currently with procedures and protocols handled.
Well, that's protocol handled.
That's the decorum.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
And if you look at, at the paragraph regarding where it does reference Bell, the subsection five, or four point two A, it just says, it shall be a violation of section for any council member to violate any general law or regulation or ethical standard, and that's effectively the grounds for the, um, for the censure. It's, it's broad, it's a broad statement. But I think that's intended, because you can't really identify or list every reason why somebody can be censured.
That would be part of the due process to, to determine whether they actually did violate whatever was in place.
Yeah, exactly, whether, I mean, most of the time it's usually a ethical statement or a, a tack or verbal statement, um, and whether that went too far. And that sort of objection falls toward the, for the council committee.
Any questions on this subject?
I'm just trying to consider how it applies to, at the federal level, they have a, they have a process. Because we know there have been some members of Congress that have been censured.
Yeah.
I guess that's happened.
Well, it's, it, it is and it's not, because I think sometimes it looks like it's politically motivated, too. And so, for the individual that ends up being censured, their supporters might look at, at as them being attacked by, by others in the, in whatever body censured them, and, and I just don't know how serious people take it anymore. I think it's used as a, as a mallet against somebody, shame on you, you were censured, but, but I think others can wear it as a badge of honor to say, look, I have to fight against my own, my own body here to get something done. Councilmember Allen.
Paragraph H says, it looks like those are the most severe penalties to impose sanctions on members who conduct those acts. Forty-four, you know, loss of seniority, kind of more committee assignments, removal from committees.
I think that this is more, this kind of thing is, is a little bit more to the state and, and federal level, because your, your committee assignments at that level are a pretty big deal. We don't really have a lot of that here, except for the boards and commissions that we serve on.
Yeah.
And so you could, you could vote to not have the person served on those committees anymore.
Well, I'd hate to lose my seniority, man, that was on.
Yeah, I don't know that we have a lot of, a lot of, um, ability to enforce anything. So we could censure somebody by, you know, and formally tell them that we don't like their behavior, but it's really gonna be up to that individual to change their behavior or not.
I think, I think in the past, it was considered like the, the scarlet letter, even censured, and, and the community would be outraged by that. I think nowadays, it just doesn't carry the same weight, but.
No, not without an ability to remove somebody from a committee that's important to them and their, and their constituents.
Correct.
Or something else that's really a penalty, but I don't think we really have anything that we can, we can penalize a person with.
In some cities where they have a rotating mayor and they're next in line or something, you know, I could see maybe, okay, we're gonna take you out of that line.
Well, and, and we, when we had a rotating mayor, there was a council that removed the city mayor at the time, but they didn't have the censure policy, they just, somebody brought it up and said, I have a problem with some behaviors, can we have it on the agenda next time to talk about it? They had an item on the agenda the next time, they talked about what the issue was, and, and three voted to remove, and two voted not to, and so they removed, and, and they voted in and they were there.
Mayor, this is the, this might shed a little light on, less severe than expulsion, a censure sometimes referred to as a condemnation or an announcement, does not remove a person from office. It is a formal statement of disapproval, however, that can have a powerful psychological effect on a member. And his or her relationships as well, not social relationships, but business relationships as well. So, it sounds like a court of last resort almost before somebody gets, you know, figured, figured out how to get, get him out of office. When you're looking at the paper trail. Obviously, because the process really isn't made, uh, as short as it could be right in the middle of a meeting, but instead, it's, you know, it really brings a couple of people together and enable them, and that censure is talked about, and, you know, then the move is made as a, as an administrative tool. I, I don't know. I would agree with you, it probably doesn't have the same force, but when did it have a force?
Remember that.
That's a question.
I was wondering, you know, we're not really looking to remove him from office, I think we were looking to maintain the, the meeting without any problems.
Yeah.
Not have any disruptions, you know, it's supposed to be an example of the public and stuff. As we, you know, said, stayed before, when we do, we take a recess, you know, to calm heated arguments down. So I think, you know, none of us want to say, hey, we're gonna remove you from office, and the voter going, man, you know, we're just trying to, trying to get, you know, just to calm it down and, you know, move forward on the agenda while getting heated and, or zealous about the topic, or thinking somebody's getting something for nothing, or somebody else is getting something, so I think, you know, we just gotta look at it that way.
So you're, you're for having a censure or not? Because I understand your point.
Yeah, I'm for, but I'm for it like a limited basis, you know, not to reprimand them or anything like that, just to, you know, just to censor like, me and Mr. Wilson, Councilmember Wilson are gonna debate back and forth, and you're trying to control us, and we're just going crazy on it, and, you know, you call something, hey, we're stopping this right now, and it should stop, you know.
Okay, so, well, you can call a recess at that point, but, but we're not gonna, I guess we could bring you both up for censure for not, for not paying attention, but, um, I think that, I think that calling a recess is always something that's, that's a good thing to do, and it's, but it's not a formal process of censure. We, we don't have the ability to remove an elected official from office. We don't have plum committee assignment necessarily. Unless, unless somebody is representing the, you know, league of cities, and we don't like the way that they're behaving, then I guess that we could remove them from that. Uh, Councilmember Allen and Mr. Duffy.
I would at least like to see some sort of a policy on, on, um, inappropriate conduct or language or words, you know, being used, uh, so that, you know, I mean, I can't imagine a professional doing going that far, but you never know in this day and age, you know, whenever, or in the future, you know. I mean, we're not always gonna be around in the future, you know, when people are using, you know, your, uh, offensive language, racial terms, or offensive to subgender or something like that, you know, and it, and it needs to be censured, censured, you know. It might not be two people disagree on an item, I mean, that's what debate is about, and that's what, that's why there's five council members and not just one chief executive of the city, you know. But, uh, you know, I'm, uh, any kind of like crude or, or language or any kind of, um.
Okay, but that could also be dealt with by a recess as well, or something instead of.
I mean, yeah, but what are you gonna do with, if you get, well, okay, it could be, but if you get somebody that doesn't work, that's what I'm saying.
What happens if you can?
Councilor, Mayor Pro Tem Hasi.
Well, you know, the thing like, because we're, you know, if we're thinking this thing outside the box, I mean, uh, I think the only way we can really remove a, a member of the council, say like if that person did a sexual harassment thing against the.
I don't, no, I don't, I don't think we have the ability to remove anybody.
Well, I would think.
I, I think, I think they have to be recalled, is that true?
That's right.
That's all I know, do we, you know, recall them on that, or, you know, does the council push for the recall?
Well, there, there's a whole process for recall, though. And they go, and, and you have to gather, you have to gather the signatures, enough signatures, it has to go on the ballot, and they have to be, they have to be formally recalled by the public that, that elected them.
That's right.
Mr. President.
So I, I think the, the policy that's laid out here is, um, more of a process in terms of it, it says, hey, I believe you did something wrong at the last meeting, and you have to notify them that they did something wrong. They have the opportunity to say.
No, I didn't.
No, I didn't, or the oops, I, I'm sorry, before the council, it's gonna be written, an agenda item, placed on the agenda, you, you, it'll be laid out very clearly. You, you, it'll be laid out very clearly. But during this timeframe, the person has an opportunity to say, hey, I'm sorry. Um, and you could remove it from the agenda. You could, it happens again, you put it, you, so there's a process laid out. So, because obviously I think that the goal here is to promote good behavior. And if you have bad behavior, there's, there's a stick if you don't, if you don't follow through. But there's also an opportunity for the person, you know, to try to understand what they've done to their colleagues to move the item forward. So I think it's, I think the policy is there to say, we're not going to tolerate this. We're putting you on notice. If you don't say I'm sorry, we're going to go through with this and we're going to censure you. And what, and, and that's, and that's the end result. You have been censured. And so, and, and when someone's running for office again, someone's running against them, they're going to say, you know, you've been censured by the council, your behavior.
Get him to wear a scarlet.
Yes, scarlet.
We're sentenced to wear this for the next five meetings.
It's got to keep your mask on.
I mean, when I was reading the scarlet letter back in school, I never thought I would understand why. None of the context.
Put your mask, it's like a muzzle.
All right. I think we, we suggested that the city attorney would come back to us for the process that was fitting. So is that something we still want him to do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you've heard a lot of the comments and, and concerns and, and all that. And so you'll take that into account when you go through and come back with something that you think fits.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion on this item?
All right, the next discussion point is on pages forty-five, forty-six regarding city council emails or agenda-related items. And what this city does is they have a procedure that they have, the council members have to submit questions on agenda items by a certain time to the city manager or staff, in order for them to be appropriately responded to. And staff will, um, you know, to me, I think this is overkill. I think we're a small city. I think, uh, our staff, the city manager does respond, uh, timely to any questions. Obviously, we encourage any questions they have ahead of time. But to establish a policy with a timeframe, I think is a little bit unnecessary in my opinion. But obviously that's the council's call.
Comments?
Oh, I agree.
You agree with the city attorney?
I do.
Okay. I, I do too. I mean, I, I see one of the things in here about, about staff, um, responding to all council members with some of the answers that an individual asked. And I, I think for the most part that that's done on the large questions.
Sure.
I mean, if it's just a question for clarification that an individual council member has, I, I don't know that that needs to go out to all staff, but.
Mayor, yeah, so, so if a council member asks a question that requires an explanation or additional item that's going to, that's going to enlighten the situation, then that is just true to everyone. Because it, it, you hear that statement where I say, well, a member of the council has asked this question and therefore I'm giving you this information.
The other thing I've noticed is sometimes I've asked questions about an item in the packet and the staff report during the council meeting incorporates whatever additional, you know, explanation or elaboration on that item, which then everybody gets the opportunity.
Yeah, when we have our staff meeting, uh, there's often the question, have you heard any comments about this particular item? And I'll say, yeah, well, make sure, make sure if someone asks this question, make sure that we cover this in the, in the presentation.
Because a lot of times I'm letting you know this is a question I have and I'm probably going to ask it to the council. And that gives staff opportunity to have the answer ready so they don't have to say, oh, let me get back here.
Well, and I think too, Mayor, and, and I, I think you guys understand, there is a difference between, uh, Councilperson Wilson asking a question about what he didn't understand versus, uh, Mayor Protim Hussey asking a question that required me to provide him with some data. And I want to make sure that everybody gets that same, that same data.
Yeah, and, and I agree, and I think that you do though. I don't, I think that any attempt to formally document that happening makes it more cumbersome for you to do the job. And I would even further say that if I got a city manager that didn't do that, that didn't proceed in that manner, that that would probably be part of the, the review process. Okay, so, so we don't believe that anything needs to change with respect to that. Is that one here? Okay. City Council Board's Commission Policy for Travel Miscellaneous Expense Reimbursement, don't we already have something?
We already have that.
Okay.
And I mean, I, I think we have a separate document, but it, but it's all, it's a policy we already have.
It's in, it's in the, it's in the purchasing, purchasing policy.
Okay, so maybe we just, we have a line item and then it points to the purchasing policy or, or this? Just so that there's an understanding that it does exist?
Okay.
And that way, if it ever changes in that other document, this one's pointing to the other document. You don't have to worry about updating them all. All right, are there any other discussion items or policies or procedures that you think are missing from what we already have?
You want that?
Uh, page eighty-five.
Okay, I'm not hearing any, any additions at this time.
Oh, yeah. So the only other thing is on page eighty-five, packet page, uh, there's an ethics addendum that's kind of just, I guess, more like, uh, ethics for council members.
Yeah.
Uh, is this something that the council would be open to or? Some of this, I think, is like, like gifts and favors. I mean, that's, that's not really established in state law.
Yeah, it's, it's part of what we have to disclose and, and then all the other, all the other things that we get told for not following.
Correct. Uh, so really the only part of it that could be effective was like page forty-nine. But even then, some of this is incorporated into the decorum discussion?
I think it's incorporated into the decorum, but maybe some of these items are reasons for censure.
That's a good point.
Well, and so especially if you were mayor, for example, it's almost like a pledge, these, these items. And so you, so you acknowledge that you, that this is the pledge and then you can't turn around later and say, well, I, I, I didn't know.
Okay, but come on.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what, that's what that is.
I mean, we've got decorum that, that covers a lot of this, how we'll treat each other. Uh, we should be complying with the law because that's something that we said we'd uphold when we, when we took our oath of office.
Yeah, so this is, this is a lot like, so when a, we did an employee, we send them over the packet and there's everything, it's all positive in there. And then they're so excited about getting the job, they read the packet and they sign the form. And then we get that form and put it in personnel file. So they can't say they didn't, they didn't know what the rules were. And that's, that's, that's kind of what that is to me. It's a, you're called, I take this pledge.
I think that if we're going to go through and talk about ways, reasons to censure a council member, that I think a number of those items will come out in there. And I don't know that I need to, I mean, if, if, if it comes down to it and everybody says, well, you know, we really want all of us to do this, then, then I guess I'll do it. But I don't necessarily see the value in it either. Like, I'm either going to do it or I'm not, but whether I sign that letter saying that I will or not. How about you, Councilmember Wilson?
Councilmember Wilson thinks it's a good idea to expand our, our little, our, I, I love the idea of protecting the laws of the United States, the state of California, city of grand Terrace and all that good stuff. But if people are too stupid to understand that they have to act like human beings, they might as well remind them in that way, you know, you can remind them again when it comes to pushing up. So, you know, you, you've seen the thing that I've.
So do you want to sign a, a?
Absolutely. I, I, I don't feel as if I could sign that, I'm a business servant.
Well, I'm not saying that I can't sign it. I'm just saying I, I would try and do that whether I signed a piece of paper saying I would or not.
I agree, you would, I would. Well, let's think of some examples out there that might just accidentally end up in a position. All crazy, really good.
Okay, so will you create something as an addendum to our censure policy then?
Sure.
All right. Councilmember Allen.
This addendum that we're just looking at right here, so on packet page eighty-five, so the, the ad hoc committee, they're going to, you're going to take this information along with the voting discussed earlier and come up with Grant Terrace's version. That's good, okay. I was reading this and the only thing on this addendum that I would have felt more comfortable with is, and maybe it's semantics, but every one of these is members shall do something. And I like, I, I would have written, members are expected to comply. You know, members are expected to perform their duties in accordance with. Members are expected to base their decisions on, rather than just saying, you shall do this. You know, it's sort of that way, rather than somebody telling you what you're going to do. It's just somebody saying, this is an understanding that this is, you're going to do, this is, that's going to work.
All right, or, or if you wanted to go to the document that you were going to sign it, I believe that it should be in the first person. I agree that I will behave in these, in this manner.
There you go.
And I agree that I will treat others in this way and I agree that I will do these things. Instead of the, you shall or you are expected to.
Yeah, that's true.
Because again, I go back to either I'm saying that I'll do it and that's what, that's what I am offering up to my, my council colleagues and, and the staff members that are here that this is what I'm saying I will do and this is how I'm saying I will behave. Not you need to hold me to this and, and good luck trying to make me do all these things. If I'm not offering up that, that I will do these and that too. That's my agree, that's my agreement with you, that that's how I will behave.
Just be written, I will comply, I will, I will base, so I will.
Yeah, I will is a better word. I shall is a, is a loosey-goosey word, unfortunately.
Actually, is it legal, is it, is it legal when you say shall? It's, it, it held more, um, compliance than will?
Yeah, I mean, shall is, I mean, they're both mandatory statements.
If we were to take men as I will not kill, so I shall not.
I say, hey, you know, I promise.
Well, you know what? I, I think really when they're talking about this, this addendum, that it's really the council coming together saying, look, how, how do we promise that we're going to treat each other? And it's, it's really supposed to be a relationship building with, with council members, with each other, instead of something coming down from on high saying, you shall be these things and you shall do these things. It's really how are we going to agree that we're going to treat each other and have discussions and do the best for the sake of it, yeah? And we're not always going to agree, but when we, when we don't agree, we're going to do it in a manner that's not disagreeable. And we're going to allow other people to, to not always agree with what we, what we agree with.
So Doug, you're going to write in N I B version instead of K J.
I agree with that.
Mr.?
Yeah, Mayor, and maybe one of the things that we want to consider also is the acknowledgement of receiving the council policies.
No, I think that's important.
Good question.
Well, like Councilmember Wilson said, I mean, you know, if we raise our hand in public, but what everybody always comes back to, did you sign something? Because they always say, oh, I didn't, I didn't know that, I didn't sign anything. Even though you raised your hand, and we signed our oath.
We signed our oath.
What do they do at the federal level? President did what today? Yesterday?
Yesterday.
He said a favor, put his hand on his hand and babbled and said, I will, I swear I'll do this. And do they make them sign something after that?
Yeah.
I think he signed something.
There you go.
Well, you did.
We did the course on that.
There's no way signature is like, Councilmember Allen, we signed a right wing joint service. Signed it to this whole way.
Yeah, I believe that's perfect thing. When I was watching the senators, uh, take their oath, they were signing something right after. So they did have their oath.
At your oath of office.
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, there was, I'm trying to remember who was standing. I think it was one of the Supreme Court members. And when they did his swearing in, in public, they did something that wasn't.
Correct.
That wasn't binding or, yeah, they didn't do it correctly. So they, they went somewhere private and, and did the oath of office all over again.
Yeah.
President Obama.
Three or four times with Obama, he, it was like three different times he had to sign.
First time to, to go back in and redo it.
Yeah, yeah, that, so it was most recently with a, with his Supreme Court justice.
Can you imagine, right, those two senators, those two senators, one of them has to run again in two years.
Wow, that's crazy.
Well, you know, one of the special elections, two more years, he hasn't been all over again. Because he's, for the Georgia week?
Oh, for Georgia, not, not Alex Padilla.
No, Padilla's around.
Four, four more years.
Four more years, okay.
But, oh, yeah, one of the, something where you don't need to stop, don't need to sit down, just keep on.
So, so our ad hoc committee is going to look at process for censure and an agreement between the council members.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, and we're going to have something to look at. The second meeting in February, is that the time when the city attorney will come back as well?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, you're doing the boards, you're doing the, the planning commission and all that, you're doing the section, sorry. But our ad hoc for the boards that are the planning commission and the other boards and commissions is coming back with an agreement between the council members. All right, anything else?
Will, will, will that be submitted with your, with Adrian's packet? So i- is the whole packet coming back to the council on the, on the ninth or only a cer- a certain number of things?
It's the second meeting in February?
I'm, I'm sorry, okay, so.
So they're going to have something?
And?
And he's going to have that, you can put it all into one item if you want.
I was, I was asking, yeah, but ready to get into it all.
The whole?
The whole thing.
Or you can make it two separate issues on the agenda. And it might be a better discussion if it's two separate because one's talking about, um, appointed commissions and boards and one of them's talking about censure of, of council members.
Okay, so the packet isn't going on?
Right, just those two issues are coming before me. And then based on that direction, we'll compile the packet and lay that back, uh, future reading.
All right. All right. So having done that, thank you very well for being here. We will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one at six P. M. Senator.